...the order of the special council meeting and budget work session Tuesday, April 1st, until four o'clock in Casey City Hall Chamber. Uh, certification, Councilor Thomas.
Good question, guys.
Pray me if you will. God, thank you so much for allowing us to see another beautiful day in a beautiful city of Casey, San Bernana. Continue to allow our people, our first responders, our teachers, our students, to be safe in our city. And God, thank you so much for allowing Betsy to be with us today. Thank you so much for answering our prayers, allowing your great touch to heal her, her family, and allowing us to be witnesses to your power. And oh, God, please allow us to have a great session today and do your will for your people. Name your prayer, you know.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The present public have been notified according to the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a discussion of proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 Utility Fund Budget. If I could just take a minute before we get started, I would like to say this is one of my favorites from the year. I absolutely love being with our team and being in the same room with y'all on the same floor as we all. It's a really special one this year because we have Betsy back here with us. And that means a lot to us because your excellence in this job is really unparalleled. And we're really glad that you're back here doing it with us. But an important thanks to all of you. Don't cry, can you make me cry? Okay. It really is an important thanks to each of you because y'all all stood in there when we needed you to and when we were, you know, missing Betsy being with us every day. So, thank you all so much. And for the rest of the team that's not here, we wish they were here, although we're not all of you right now. But, you know, we'd love for our councilmen, our staff members to be here with us because we make those decisions within the report. So, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, it's that time of year again. Start off our utilities budget. I'm going to let our CFO, Kelly McMullin, start with our revenues. Jump right into it.
Mayor, Member of Council. Thank you guys for joining us today and welcome to the 2026 Budget Process. There's a couple of things that you're going to see that have changed this year. Number one, we have implemented a capital improvement plan. What that does is it segregates our capital improvement, what you'll call here we call CIP. It separates that from our operating budgets that we can focus on operating first and then see how much money we have left or focus on capital after. The requested budget that you see in front of you that you guys did have, and it includes all operating expenses and small capital, those are your small pieces of tools and equipment, it does not include your big capital projects as of yet. So, essentially, what we do is we, once we finish the operating budget, we will look at our revenues and expenses, and any revenues we have in excess of our expenses at that time will be allocated to the capital improvement plan. I wanted to start off with a little bit of an experiment that was pulled on the septic increase facility. We did want to do, even though when we calculate debt coverage, it is not specific to a particular bond or a particular department, we did want to run an experiment on the septic increase facility and the bond associated with it. So, just as by way of information, the septic increase facility has averaged about one and a half million dollars in revenues from 2020 to 2024. The annual principal interest payments that we have to pay on the debt associated with the septic receiving station improvements that we did is about 220,000 annually. So, what that means is that the septic increase facility is earning revenues at 142% of their debt, which is far beyond the 115% debt coverage that we were required to do in our bond covenants. Just a little tidbit. Since COVID, inflation has had a tremendous increase on the utilities budget. Just for statistics sake, fiscal year 11, going all the way back to fiscal year 2022, the average CPI was 1.66 a year. In 2023, that changed to 4.7. In 2024, that changed to 8. In 2025, that changed to 4. And again, in 2026, RFA has already calculated 2.95, so basically 3% in 2026. What that means for the utilities budget, the utilities budget is actually operating with capital heavy, less so salaries, if that makes sense. So, salaries and fringes only account for about 25% of the utilities fund budget. It makes it very unique on the utilities fund side because inflation cost increases, they impact the utilities budget more than they may the general fund budget because we're so reliant on chemicals and we pay a lot of fees. And when those go up, the utilities budget does suffer a little bit more than the general fund. Just to give you a couple statistics, because I like giving out statistics, from 2020 to 2025, looking at budgeted expenses, the sludge disposal costs increased 175%. Liability insurance on employees and vehicles, 114%. The employer portion of health insurance, anywhere from 22% to 38%. The cost of operating a vehicle, 18%. What that does over time is it starts to compress utilities fund budget. We have to pay more for operating, which means we get less money back, leftover for capital. So, historically, pre-COVID, we used to actually allocate around $600,000 to $900,000 in capital every single year. When COVID happened, we had to kind of switch our tactics a little bit. So, instead of having $600,000 to $900,000 in capital, that became more around 200,000. And we started using money from reserves. You guys can remember 2025, the budget, 2.28 million pulled from reserves. It also significantly impacted the city's debt coverage requirement set forth in our bond covenant, excuse me, which requires us to keep revenues at 115% excess over our bond principal and interest payments for the year. As inflated operating costs started affecting the budget, then we started seeing our debt coverage go down. And 2025, we are expecting to be around 117%. Still fine. But what you guys did in 2025 by the rate increase, which I know was not fun, but it really, it has so many positive effects on the budget and it's so great watching the change in the strides that we're making, is we now have sufficient revenues to allocate some money back to capital again. We are changing our debt service coverage. We'll go from 117 to 121. The, we were able to put in some money to replenish some of the reserve accounts that we've been using, not a lot, but a little. And we do, this budget in front of you does not include an allocation from any other reserve accounts right now. So, in summary, the strides that we've seen and the position of the utilities fund is great. As always, staff will always remain vigilant in its pursuit of grant funds, alternative funding sources, to try to alleviate budget constraints. But just by way of a little history and a little present, just wanted to kind of give you some statistics. Any questions for me? I know you all want to talk about this.
Thank you, Kelly. Question?
Yeah, that was really good, Kelly. And I know you probably got those where you can send them to us.
I can.
That's some really, really good statistics that you were pushing out there, like the insurance rates that continue to go up and the percentage that that comes back to. If you don't mind sharing those with us, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
That's some really good numbers. Thank you. Numbers on live, did you?
No, when I find them fascinating.
Ah, that's why you are who you are. Look out, that's good. Thank you for sharing those. That's really good.
Just to, could you repeat the recent septic number? We required it 118%. Is that what you said?
The bond covenant requires a 115%.
115.
Yes.
And we have 153.
And we are at 1, this is why I write them. We are at 142.
14, okay, so, okay.
So, you said for septic increase?
Yes.
Yes.
If it wasn't standalone, yes.
If it's standalone.
Yeah, I'm just understanding.
It is not, absolutely no. The bond covenant does require us to combine everything into one, so your utilities fund doesn't work like this, but it was just a small little experiment to see.
Exactly. Thank you. Good, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, thank you.
I think, are we ready for me? I guess. Okay. All right. First of all, thank you for having us sit down with you this year. Again, we're always very grateful to have that opportunity. This year, as Kelly kind of alluded to, it's a little bit different. We have different software. We have, you know, we've gone about our budget process a little bit differently, so our presentation to you is going to be a little bit different this year. We're going to not have the, you know, the fancy slides and my step-by-step process that you've seen a couple of years with trying to climb up that mountain that we have. So, you're going to hear from me a good bit, but you're also going to have the opportunity to talk with staff and they'll be here and I'll introduce them as they come up. We're going to start with something that's a little bit differently. Obviously, we know that the rate increase that occurred was not an easy thing. We want to talk a little bit to you about the impacts, the positive impacts that that has had on our utilities. And so, I'm going to start by trying to run through some big things that you've approved over the last year that are really making a big difference for us. So, first of all, approximately 2,030 new meters were purchased. In this case, it was with ARPA funds, but this allowed us to start replacing old meters, which allows us to be more efficient. Not only are the meter readings more accurate, but it also helps us to be able, in most of these cases, to drive by and get readings, which makes staff time more efficient. We don't have to worry about getting out as much as we did once we get all these installed. And we have a new coordination system that was installed at our Highway 321 booster pump station, which is out towards the Gaston area. This replaced a manual system that was very inefficient. So, that in itself has been a tremendous help to staff. It's working great. It's more efficient, gives us a better residual in our tank out there, so we're really excited about that. We have a coordination upgrade that is in the works for our water treatment plant, where we will eliminate the use of the gaseous chlorine that's on site now and provide a safer environment for our staff. We also had some, had some new initiatives even in water administration where we have an RFQ for a sewer system master plan and a hydraulic model that has been advertised, and we're now in the process of selecting a consultant that's going to kind of guide us through this process to look at the big picture and help us to prioritize our needs. This is the first time that this has ever happened and the first time that we're going to get a true glimpse into the future to help us better prepare for where we need to go and even look at what our potential needs are within our system for wastewater capacity and things of that nature, where right now, we don't really know until we get into an evaluation to figure out where our needs are. So, this is huge for us. We also have, again, many pumps that have been purchased over the last year. And that includes a new raw water pump and a new high-service pump that are being installed for the water plant to provide better redundancy and sustainability. And then, we've also had a few replacements for aging pumps in our wastewater system and at the wastewater plant. All of these things helped tremendously with reducing the downtime of equipment and help us to have something there that we can keep going and keep operations going smoothly. Probably one of the things that I've heard LeGrand get the most excited about since I've been out in the city is the terminal tractor, which is also called Yard Dog, a Yard Dog, that was in this year's budget. And the reason he gets so excited about that is because it has made us more efficient with sludge processing, because we can now continue to process sludge, we can fill up trailers and have them ready when our driver comes back to pick up those trailers, and there's not a delay for the truck driver, so he can keep going. He's back and forth all day, which helps us to get more loads to the landfill. So, that has been a tremendous help on that end. And then, of course, I would be remiss not to mention two of our big projects, two big projects that are going on currently, with pump station number one and Six Mile Creek. You've heard a lot of talk about these areas over the years, and we are very excited to have them underway. The pump station number one project will upgrade our largest pump station, making it more reliable, more efficient, and again, helping us to be more sustainable. Construction on that should be completed around October of this year, so we're super excited about that. And then, the Six Mile Creek project that is happening behind the Moss Creek subdivision is our largest transmission line, a 36-inch line that was in deteriorating shape and needed to be lined. So, we are lining that, and that project should be completed in June of this year. These projects have come to fruition partially because we've been able to secure funding through grants, partially because we've had, you know, you guys approved funding for it in other ways, but none of it would have happened without you guys giving us the approval to proceed with these things. So, we're very grateful for that and just want you to know that this has really had a very positive impact on us, and we look forward to continuing with some of those projects. So, one thing that I wanted to mention as far as revenue impacts, just to add a little bit to what Kelly said earlier, we're continuing to see growth outside of our city in our industrial parks. This is not always an immediate thing that we see, but we do not think we will likely see a huge impact in FY26. But just to let you know on the horizon, Lexington County did announce that we have an industry that's coming out to the Saks-Gallivan Industrial Park that is a very large water user. They're going to be using about a million gallons a day in water, which is a huge addition for us. And so, that will be a very big boost for events and his staff as far as water usage as well as revenue that we will be pulling in for that. So, that's, you know, it's also important to know that there are things coming, which is all the more reason for us to make sure that our pumps and equipment are in good operating shape because once we start ramping up in flow, you don't have a whole lot of room for error whenever you start getting further up on that end. So, now to the part that's going to be a little bit different. So, you've all received sort of the breakdown on our expenditures, proposed expenditures for FY26. So, you have our operate, there's split between our operational budget, operations budget, and our CIP budget. So, I'm going to talk just briefly about our operations budget, and then I'm going to pull staff up and we're going to talk about the CIP that's requested. Looking at our operations.
Okay.
So, I really don't have what you have in your hands, so I'm really going to look at just the utilities summary. So, you're good. The summary page. So, if you look at our proposed FY26 operations budget, we are almost exactly where we were for FY25, which is amazing. And part of this is our managers have done a fantastic job of controlling cost. We have, we have gone through and taken a hard look at things, and where we have the ability to do so, we've made reductions and we have controlled our spending in those few areas where there might be a little bit of flexibility. I'm not talking about huge amounts of money there, but every little bit helps with that. There really are no big increases at all. However, we cannot control the inflationary side of things, and that's where, that's where things impact us more than anything, is the inflation of everything, as Kelly mentioned. So, there are across the board inflationary increases for service contracts, for chemicals, materials, sludge. As Kelly mentioned, insurance has skyrocketed and continues to do things. You know, we don't really see an end to any of this. It just, it just keeps going. It keeps, keeps growing. So, that's something that we have to keep up with. And so, I will point out that we are coming up on the end of our three-year term for sludge disposal, and we will have to negotiate a new contract soon. That starts in September. That's usually not a pleasant experience because typically, you can, you can be guaranteed that our.
Interest is, like, ceiling.
Yeah. Our costs are going to go up, and we expect there to be a significant increase in the landfill disposal costs again.
Betsy, can I ask, so you mean the client of the facility or which contract do you mean?
The, our contract with Waste Management, which allows us to take our sludge to the landfill.
So, power sludge, not what the client is going to need to us to take?
And so, we have reached out to Waste Management. We're awaiting some information back from them. We hope to have some more definitive information as to where, where they're going to be going with things to help us to make some decisions before we bring back a recommended budget for you. So, unfortunately, that's, you know, we're, we're still way ahead of where they are, you know, as far as the renewal date of the contract with it being in September. Is that an odd time? I would like, I would like to change that, and that's part of my request this year, is that we would like to align it better with our, with our fiscal year so that we don't start and then find out that we have to increase cost. So, I'm trying to work with them to make sure that we can get some cost upfront before we get to the point of renewal time so that we can better budget now. So, the only other thing that is significantly new for operations, for the operating budget, is that we have one new FTE that is proposed, and that is at the wastewater plant. We talked about this last year, that as flow picks up, we need more runtime on our solids handling, and so we need staff present longer so that we can have more or less either an overlapping or two shifts there in order to get more runtime out of the equipment. And eventually, we may need a 24-hour shift, but we're, we're going gradually, and the first thing would be a second shift that we add. And I believe with Grand, this individual or this position would allow us to have a second shift if they're hired, right? So, that would be kind of our second shift on the solids handling side at least, where we would have at least two people present to, for safety reasons, and to be there to run everything. So, that is our only position request for FY26 is with the solids handling. So, our largest cost, biggest, you know, biggest individual costs really come in with capital, as Kelly, you know, mentioned. So, we're going to spend some time talking about the request. As Kelly mentioned, you know, if you look at our historical trends, we, the last few years have not invested significantly in capital until we had some market funding and until we had reserve funds that we transferred over last year. Obviously, pulling money out of reserves is not sustainable at that level for very long. So, that's not something that we're planning on doing this year. If you look at your revenues and expenses that Kelly has projected, you see that there is about $612,000 that is kind of on the bottom line there that, you know, don't look at this as a, it's at the very top. I think, yeah. It, don't look at this as a surplus. That is not at all what that is. That is just $600,000 that we have outside of the operation, operating budget that we can put towards capital. So, that operating, operations budget does not include capital at this point.
Which is still very good because we're able to cover the operations already.
Yes. I mean, it's better than we did last year. I mean, last year, we couldn't cover the operations side of things. So, we're in a better place, for sure. But now, we have to figure out, you know, what we're going to do with that $600,000, which is why I want you to kind of hear where our needs are. And this, and by no means, you know, when we, when you look at our total CIP chart that Kelly put together for you, we are looking at about 11, almost 12 million dollars in That's not to scare anybody because we know we can't fund all of that. You know, we know that we're going to have to make a lot of hard decisions. That's a lot. We are going to be looking at as much as we can for being creative with, with bonds or down the road at least, or grants, cost share funding from, from different sources and, and doing what we can to squeeze as much out as we can with, with what our needs are. Because if we don't continue to put money back into our system, then it will definitely catch up with us, and it has been. So, we just, we'll take it step by step and get us to where we need to be. So, I'm going to start with the utility administration department, which is me, and what I'm going to do is just sort of run through real quick, and all of this will be very quick. And what I'm going to say is, if you have questions at any time, don't hesitate to stop and ask. If we get through all of this and you have questions, please, you know, let us know if you have questions down the road. Ask. Yes, sir?
Just that I won't forget, you said there's a company coming that is going to be pulling 1 million gallons of, of water?
That is correct.
Is that, are there any other companies in Casey that, or that we provide services to that pull that amount, or is this like historic?
We have had some, is that accurate, that have used that much, but a lot of industries are moving towards, we were talking about this the other day, water conservation.
Yes, Mayor.
So, it's not typical that you see new industries that are using that much water now.
We have one current large user industry.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have a couple that do, but not an amount of that.
Oh, okay.
One million is a lot over what we have for any other industry.
So, the biggest item that we have for CIP in utility administration is the asset management software request. So, this current year in FY25, we're So this current year in FY25, we're evaluating the asset management software to determine what will assist us and help us best in managing our assets and tracking issues, scheduling maintenance and replacements. This is a continuation of where the FY26 request is a continuation of what will be requested for FY25. So it's the actual purchase of the software that we're looking at for FY25, if that makes sense. So it's the next step in the asset management process. And that, other than, and I'm gonna say off the, off the surface that any IT computer replacement type things that are pretty standard, we're, unless Jamie has a need to get into that, we're not gonna cover, you know, any of those things. It'll be just specific to the items that are more equipments related and, and software related. So Kay, I'm gonna ask you to come up. And so Kay Hutchinson is our customer service and billing manager. And so there are two requests for FY26 that are in her department that I will run through. And if you have any questions, then we can let you ask away. But the first one is backflow prevention software. We currently have about 1,500 backflow devices that we monitor throughout the city and we are required to make sure that those devices are tested where they are required to be tested and track all of that information on an annual basis. So we are currently manually tracking all of that information. This is just software to bring us a little bit more into current times and to try to speed up our efficiencies and, and speed up the processing time for entering that information. And then the second item.
I'm sorry, Betsy.
That's okay.
I don't know where we're following. So if we can.
Okay, to me, young guys, I don't know either.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking.
Are we utility billing?
You're starting billing, right?
Utility billing.
It appears they, they have something different.
I don't remember.
I guess that's partly my fault because I thought it was more important to spend time on, on some of the capital because that's where the differences are. I believe you have.
They're all looking at the agenda packet.
Okay, they have access to.
Sure, sure.
They have the link.
There was a link.
This is what I have for utility billing. That's okay, right?
Yes.
Pretty different, which I'll have.
So what, what I'm doing is basically going into a little bit more detail than the, the summary table that you see by department, that is the CIP summary table. I'm just going into more detail of what's in that summary table for FY26.
This is page, page five of the agenda packet. I'm following along on the agenda packet.
That'd be great, maybe show us where we're going.
It's page five of the utility administration that Betsy just went over.
Yep, that's all, that's before, thank you.
And then page six is utility billing that she's speaking of now.
But those items are.
No, the, the summary that I'm referring to is in the utility fund summary page. It's the first page.
First, the first page of that budget?
So in your packet, there's FY26 listing by department of the amount of capital request per department. And what I'm just doing is diving into that a little bit more.
Excuse me. So the deep, you said you're going into details, thank you for that, but are those details in that link that you provided us a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
So if we go to that link.
The one that came from me, yes.
Yeah, the one, yeah, which is wonderful, by the way. Beyond wonderful, actually. It's really good. Okay, thank you. So I can go find it.
So then, yeah, so to Phil's point then, how do we find that when we're?
From the link that I sent?
No, 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 from when she's talking about like how we pull that up.
So she's going to keep referring to just the overview. Is that the one you're in?
That's, I got that over here.
So for this one, just go down, you can skip all of these and you can go straight to anything that's utilities. So all of those will be in here and then.
We'll have it go.
Yes, which is the same thing.
Being able to follow along.
You are going, oh, if you want to get into your capital projects, they're all of you. So I need to, billing right now?
Yep.
Skip out, you need to, billing. Whichever one, she's talking about.
Yay, awesome.
Yep, no worries, no worries. Sorry about that one, yep.
New software hiccup, sorry.
Yes, sorry. So, okay, the second capital request from billing is the AMI meter reading functions, which is, the AMI stands for advanced meter infrastructure. So we currently have the drive-by system, where you drive by. What this involves is kind of that next step where there is a fixed system that reads the meters, the meters instead of driving by. There's a fixed system, it's read and it reports it back to us so that customers have the ability to get more information. They can get, they can monitor their daily usage, they can monitor for leaks. It's, it's a, it's the next step in technology. So what this is, is, is kind of the first phase of trying to start implementing some of that. It not only is a customer-friendly step, but it also helps with the safety of some of the areas where we still are having to manually get out and read. You know, we have locations along Airport Boulevard and some areas where it's just not safe for staff to have to get out and read things in the traffic and the busier roads. So this would help us to be able to implement some of those functions there. So I believe that's the gist of everything on those two. Are there any questions about those two projects?
So capital request phased over three years to get everything in all, all system wide. So phasing that in and kind of start and work this way out.
Well, I mean, so as you know, we did the meter replacement project back through 2018 and replaced 75% of the inside city meters. Those are ready to go. We just have to kind of switch the endpoints on it, the little antenna that sends the signal out. And those would be ready once a, the collectors are installed on any assets like water towers or anything like that. So we could, we could pull the reads into the office instead of actually going out there at any time. So that would be really cool. But with the ARPA money from last year, we received 2,000 three-quarter inch meters and those we're replacing, those will take a year and a half to two years to get in the ground fully and we'll be able to do the same thing with the meters that weren't replaced at that time. It'd be a hybrid system with either collectors on towers or for the ones that the towers and assets can't reach with the collectors, we would use cellular. So it'd be a hybrid system.
Any other questions on that? Okay, I'm gonna ask Vince to come on up here while I get started and I see we're already eating into the time pretty quickly. So I, what I'm gonna do is just kind of read through what his capital requests are and give you just a very quick overview. If you have questions, then you can address those now or later.
Is that the Vince that we won the award of third best tasting water in South Carolina?
Yes, I have that on my list. Yes, yes.
Best in the Midlands?
Yes, best in the Midlands. Yes, we're very, very excited.
So George Shannon Mount Pleasant was one of two.
Yeah, yeah.
Great job, Vince.
That was awesome.
Yeah.
So Vince has several and, and you'll see this with our plants. We have, we have a little bit more, you know, capital request, obviously with our plants. So we have replacement of some transmitters for the filters that were originally installed when the plant was built in 2002. So those, it's just ending, end of useful life on those things and they're no longer supported for repairs. We have six filter waste drain actuators that have exceeded their useful life. We have replacement of one of the transmission pumps at the raw water station. Again, this is one of the, we're trying to cycle through everything and either refurbish or replace some of those pumps. And then security camera upgrades. The cameras are original to the, the plant upgrade as well in the early 2000s, so they've exceeded their useful life. And then we have a variable frequency drive that's a little bit smaller item than, than some capital, but it's exceeded its useful life and is no longer being supported by the manufacturer. So those are, are the main things that he is requesting. And again, you do have links to all of these narratives that Kelly sent you. So if you want to go back and read them and then you have questions, we're more than happy to help with any of that going forward. But I guess currently, do you have any questions for Vince regarding any of those items?
Could you repeat what the second item was?
Yes, sir. The second item was filter waste drain actuators.
Thank you. And I would love as we go forward in the budget process to understand what things were asked for last year that are on there this year again, because I, I would like to be aware of what didn't get addressed last year so that we're aware of that and we'll make decisions this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
All right, so Ben Wright will be coming up and he is the manager of both our water distribution and wastewater collection departments. So I will try to read through two different departments for him, but we'll start with water distribution. The first request is a spare pump for a 321 booster pump station. That is a situation where if one of our pumps goes down, it puts us in an emergency situation and it can take two to six months to get a replacement pump. So it's just trying to get us in a better position if emergencies arise and repairs are needed. Next item is a dump truck that is to replace a 1996 model dump truck that has, yeah, that has the equivalent of about 740,000 miles on it and it's being requested by our fleet manager to be replaced.
It's right in the museum.
Yes, that's right. So we then have another vehicle-related request that is a utility truck. This is an everyday truck that has about 145,000 miles on it and it is a, a service truck. So this is a request that we will put in there. Again, we know all of these will not be, you know, fulfilled, but we want you guys to know what request have been submitted by staff. And then we have the star mount and ETMF improvements. ETMF is our tank out on Highway 321 with the USC golf pictures, pretty artwork on it. So that tank has a booster pump station next to it that has not worked for a long time. I, I don't know how long. Yeah, long, long time. The ETMF tank out Highway 321 with the golf scene on it, yep. And so that particular booster pump, the intent of it was that it was to provide boosted pressure in certain areas of our system. So it has, that, we've kind of put this off for as long as we can. It needs to be addressed. We need to refurbish that and figure out, you know, what is needed in order to get that booster pump up and running so that we do have plenty of pressure in that part of our system. So that is what that's for. So that is all of, of the water distribution, water distribution request on capital, if there's any questions on that side.
Betsy, how long has this pump been out? Years, I mean, almost, you can't remember since then?
It, it hasn't run since I've been here. This is my 22nd year.
Has it been brought to this council before?
I don't know if it has. It's, it's an item that was in the last CIP that was put together in the early 2000s. And I can't answer why it was not done, other than it just kept getting cut for financial reasons. So.
So what's the advantage? Obviously, you, you mentioned pressure, but how much was the tab, give or take?
Um, I believe it is about, we're expecting around 400,000. So it, it will be split between two years though. We, we anticipate starting in FY26, but then continuing into FY27 without. So that helps a little bit.
So I guess we weigh, we're certainly almost short any customers, but I guess we weigh the amount of customers out there and sort of try to justify 400,000 dollars. Wow.
Well, it, it's.
You answered your own question about why it's not in funding.
Yeah, I guess I did.
Unfortunately, though, there are limitations to what is allowed by regulatory, the regulatory side, and that's where we're kind of on that edge there.
In my simple little mind, all I can see is also building pressure, things going.
Yeah, no, no, it would be that for sure. It would not be that, yes, yes.
And Betsy, just to make sure, you don't have any extra booster pumps, correct?
Um, not for that area.
No, not for that.
You talking about for 321?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Further out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, no, not. The spare pump is, no, we, we only have, and this may be what you're asking, we only have two booster pump stations in our system after you leave the plant. There's one way out 321 towards Gaston and then there is one over near our CAE White Knoll area. And so the, the one that's at the ETMF tank will be the third.
Okay, I got you.
Then the next department for Ben is wastewater collection. And so I'm gonna run through those requests and then you, you can ask questions as we go or, or at the end. But we have an upgrade for our Ar brigade pump station. This is part of the old Midlands utility system that the city took over years ago, prior to me and it's been a long time. 2006-ish and it has been giving us a lot of trouble. So it's old, it's outdated, it's extended its useful life and that's something that it just needs to be overhauled. So most of this work we will do in-house, but we need the materials and, and the new stuff to do it, the materials and pumps and everything in order to do that. We have both a portable pump and a portable generator that are both replacements to units that have extended their useful life and our fleet manager has begged us to, to get rid of those and get new items for emergency situations. The portable pump and the generator both would be used for emergencies. And then we have the Platte Springs pump station upgrade project. So this pump station has also exceeded its useful life. It also has been on the, the list for a long time and due to the financial side, it has never come to fruition. It is at capacity and we can't accept additional flows right now and that creates also the potential for overflows, but it's also one of our larger stations and it's just, just old and it needs to be upgraded. And this station also prevents growth from the whole Three Fountains Airport area. So it is an important pump station from a regional standpoint. So we're out, we're also working on trying to find some funding sources and some cost sharing positively from even the developer side of things. So we're trying to be creative with this, but it is an important thing that needs to be addressed. And then we have, well, the last two probably don't want to hear, but I guess we have to, to be totally transparent. So we have two, two vacuum trucks, both of which have had some issues over the last little bit. We have. We have a request for replacement of one of those back trucks that has, um, according to our fleet manager, approximately 365,000 miles equivalent, equivalent to that on there. We've had a lot of trouble with it. And so this request would be replacing that old back truck. I'm not sure if we would get, the, the question was asked yesterday, would we get any money for it? It might be worth scrap metal. I don't, I don't know at this point, but, um, you know, if we were to sell it, but, um, but that is something that, you know, it's a very pricey item. It's something that we would look more towards a lease purchase in order to do, if we can, if we can manage that. And then the last item is also a big item and, um, this is our number one priority for wastewater collections and it's a big one. We have approximately 120,000 linear feet of concrete sewer pipe in our system and we know it needs to be addressed. I mean, you guys have seen that just recently with Seventh Street, um, concrete pipe just doesn't hold up and a lot of it has been in the ground for nearly 100 years, especially over on the avenues. So we're looking at options to try to, um, handle that. We know it's a, it's a monumental task. We're looking at, you know, possibly phasing this, you know, doing different phases and trying to tackle some of the worst areas first. But it still is a huge, you know, task ahead of us even with that. So we will be, you know, looking at creative ways that we can try to, to get this started. It's much better for us to do it before there's a complete failure and we have to dig because a lot of these sewer lines are in the road, under the asphalt. And if we can get in and we can line or we can pipe burst and we don't have to dig, then it's a lot more affordable to do that, even though it's still very pricey. So that's something that we will be looking at. Hopefully with our master plan, the folks that come in to help us with that can also give us a little bit of guidance. So this is not something that we would be looking at right away, but we're hoping that at least by the end of the fiscal year, we could get started with at least some sort of a plan to try to figure out the best route to go. Any questions?
You said we have two back trucks?
Yes.
Obviously one, just, I assume by that we use that truck every day?
Yes.
Yes.
Sometimes both of them.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much our life.
Pretty much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what do we do with the, the muck and the mess?
A lot of it goes to the wastewater plant and the drying bins.
Yes.
Betsy, you've got 9.3, I think, in the FY '28 for the replacement of the asbestos cement pumping?
That's the water side.
That's the water side.
Yes. So, yes, so it's, it's, yes, it's very similar on the water side. Unfortunately, there are not a lot of options right now, other than to dig and replace on the water side.
So nothing similar to what you were talking about in the city?
7.6 million.
For wastewater basin, yes, yes. So it, um, yeah, it, it's big. It's big.
Anything?
Yes, yes.
I would love too, as we, um, continue to, to work on the budget this year, um, I really do love Open Gov and all the work that y'all have done to use this system. It's ready to use and funding. But I would love to see not just this was asked for last year, have it in here last year and not fund it, but also things like, I know last year, um, council did not fund a, um, generator that was asked for and then the generator went down, so we had to rent an emergency one. And we still have a taxpayer dollar that way. So if there is a projection of, you know, you can't always guess or know those things, but if it's 90% that this thing is going to fail, or it's 100% going to fail because we're, we are long past that line, that would, that information would be helpful for us to know, because if it's inevitable and we're not going to fund it and then we're just going to end up wasting taxpayer dollars because we're coming in after the fact, renting things in emergency, just like you just said with the concrete, you know, we can go in and we can do it ahead of time by going in and, and, and using the existing pipe and then not having to just do these emergency repairs, which are more expensive, um, to get those staff people in, then that makes a big difference. You know, we have a history of doing things really thoughtfully and carefully. We've replaced 70% of our water lines in our city. That's proactive work that a lot of these counties are going to be in a position to do. So I know that we will navigate this and figure out what to do. So thank you so much for honoring us with all of this information.
Well, Betsy, going, picking back on what the mayor said, um, you know, still learning about everything we, we haven't paid for. Is there any way we can be also provide like a, a list of, you know, if this thing was on here in 2012 or 2015, it's like, okay, hey, this was, this was asked for back in this time, just so we're aware of, okay, yeah, this is, it's been 10, five years and still, it's still being asked for. Won't be, is something can be provided to us like that or?
Well, I, I cannot speak for what has come to council is the only thing, you know. I can tell you since I've been here, you know, what has come to council. I think in the past, do I even go there? Maybe it did not make it to council with some of them.
And that's what's important about the CIP this time, the capital improvement plan that you're going to see every year. So you're going to see what was requested this year in Open Gov, which next year, the year after that, all the way through.
And, and another thing that's going to help us too, is the asset management side of things. And when we get that software in place and we're able to input all of our assets that are in the system and track what the condition is and when, when it needs maintenance, you know, approximately, and when replacements are, it's going to give us a really good plan and a really good look at what needs to be done. So that will help as well. Thank you. Okay. So now Mr. Legrande June is with us, who as y'all know, is our wastewater treatment plant superintendent and also he oversees our septic and grease facility. So as I said, he, he has, as always, I think, a lot going on at the wastewater plant, um, that, you know, it's just, it's a, it's a big place, you know, it's, it's a lot of flow and it's something that, um, is harsh condition. So there's always stuff that needs to be refurbished or, or replaced. So, um, I'm going to run through these things and try to lump them, you know, together as much as I can. The first thing is, um, some motor controls for some existing, um, building doors and things of that nature. And the next item is gate actuators. This is a continuation for something that was approved for FY '25 that basically will allow us to control the sludge blankets a little bit more remotely. When we have people on call, they can look at things and, um, it improves the safety for our on-call staff. So that, that is a big plus for safety and, and staff. We have, um, just one vehicle in this department that is a request that is for a pump truck and is that a replacement or is that a new one?
In this case, we want to repurpose the old one. The old one had the diesel tank on it and we want to fit, use that for operations only and then dedicate the new one to the control technician.
And I believe the, what Legrande has indicated is the, the highest priority for him is the grit snail belt. That's, that's hard to say, but, um, but basically it's belts that help us to remove the grit coming into the plant. So, um, it, it's just rebuilding three belts that it's time for those. We also have replacement of, um, some air conditioning units that are part of our control panels at our headworks, which is that, where everything comes into it. Those panels sit outside on top of the headworks in the bright sunshine and on, um, blacktop. So it, it just gets a lot of wear and tear and heat there, so it's important to make sure that we have those, uh, working. We have a continuation of replacing our membrane units. This is something that we're doing over the course of about three years and, um, each unit needs to be changed about every eight years. So it's just kind of an ongoing thing that occurs periodically. We have an iteration blower control panel upgrade that, um, is just needing replacement, extended its useful life. We have, um, perhaps the biggest thing, get some attention to, especially as the technology's changing to where we have the ability to do things more remotely when we have to. We don't want to have concerns about people trying to hack into our system and do things, um, you know, that are not great to our system. So that is something that we're looking at trying to fit in this budget. And I believe Jamie is also looking at some potential funding on that too. So, um, we're trying to be creative there. And then I'm going to go ahead and just hit the, the septic and grease and then if there's questions, um, we can address them and we'll be done. So there is a semi-truck replacement there. The, the truck, the, the septic side is using to haul to the sludge to the landfill has the equivalent of about, well, I think this was some time ago, had about 630,000 miles on it. So we are in need of, um...
682.
682 now? Okay.
Not just short changes.
Yeah. So we, um, you know, we will be looking at trying to, you know, possibly do a lease purchase on, on that as well. That's, you know, Kelly and I will work and try to figure some things out on that. We have just a, a concrete pad, um, that helps improve things, but it's, it's a significant concrete pad for a tractor trailer. And, um, a continuation of the belt press rebuild. This year at FY '25, we are rebuilding the electrical side of the old belt press. This is the mechanical side would be the continuation in FY '26. So, um, everything is just needing, needing some work down there. And then we also have a request for, um, a roll-up door and motor, um, to replace the original door that was installed, um, when the first part of the project was put down there. It's, it's not functioning well and it's a safety issue.
It's also part of the plant control element. It's a serious, um, renovation of the site.
But that is all the capital for those two sites and, um, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Remind me on septic and grease, I went into the operating, um, and I think we talked about this last year, originally it was paying for itself because the state had asked us to do this. And will you remind me where we are now on, um, on the balance of expenses and revenue?
Yes, so, um, you don't have that position. We are, we are good. The numbers I have don't include, include the bond. So I don't have a true picture, but you could use FY '24 probably as a... So in FY '24, our total revenue was around 1.65 billion. Our O&M expenses were 710,000. That does not include the bond. So, um, you know, we could have to add in...
220.
Okay. So we're still doing okay, generally speaking.
And is there anything on this capital budgets, um, request that could go to the stakes, if they're the ones who really want us to do this, create this plant?
I think when we tried that with, trying to put the second bay in, that, um, they were kind of like, you're on your own. Um, I don't think they were too sympathetic when we, we went to them before, so my guess is they would not be well sympathetic now. We can always try, we can always ask. It's a new agency now, so, you know, you never know if the comment is a little bit different.
Well, maybe reminding them of why they came to us to ask us to do it.
It is a huge community service, for sure.
Yes. I mean, for the touch that...
There's two of them competition, don't they?
That, that's all that I have. We certainly appreciate your time and, um, if you, if you have questions later, I mean, let Jim and Mike know and we, we're happy to pull you out to the, the plants or to the system or send you out on a meter read case, staff, or whatever you guys would like in order to get a better feel for where our needs are and, and what we do. So we welcome that. Thank you all so much. We'll go with those. We'll celebrate some of your team and we said thank you.
Really nice to have Betsy back, especially, uh, in the driver's seat with the utilities department and the director again.
She lost her hair while you were down.
Yeah, we're just that quick. So, yeah, I think it's great to have her back, her team.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So, so I'll have Mary.
Well, I just have one, one question. Just one question. Um, Jim, I guess hearing all the, these items that need to be purchased or, or considered, especially after what we went through last year, is, is there a plan moving forward for us to not be able to kick the can down the road, but not ask our citizens to, hey, we need this big grab? Like, how do we be proactive with making sure we don't allow these capital items to continue to pile up on us? But, and then come back and say, hey, we need 40% because y'all haven't, you know, raised anything, but, because I want to think about my constituents and all, obviously the whole city, but I know the calls I got last year were not pleasant when they heard, heard that 40%. So I just want to be proactive and ask you that question now.
Yes, we're taking a look at all the capital items. We're taking a look at all the revenues that we have coming in. Nobody wants to go to...
The capital is not, we didn't increase revenues for the capital.
Right.
And, and let's take last year, for example, we took all of our capital out of reserves. The revenue increase was for O&M, operational costs. And we won't do it again this year either. I mean, we, we, and I think Betsy sort of opened up with that, was this was the list of everything that we, we asked from our directors to give us what their needs are. It's unfortunate, part of our, our job is to prioritize those. And this is the same thing every year. We get asked and asked from every year. And we'll go through here and see what we, we direly need and what prioritize some of the others. We talked about some other revenue sources that we'll attack and we'll go after, whether it's grants, whether it's federal funding, whether it's partnerships with other organizations. Um, let's take the Platte Springs Pump Station, for example. It was on last year's. We pushed it off of last year's because we thought there was an avenue that we could help with a partner for a federal agency. Um, and we tried to partner with them. That did not go through, or they chose not to go after that grant. So we are again looking at other options. We're talking to a developer, a couple of developers actually about that. So there are other things in the works. This was just a wide view, so everybody understands. And we do ask that they give it to us. And with the CIP now, um, it's going to be more readily visible, as Jim mentioned earlier, that all these are out there. And we can see how they, how they move and, and they're, or they don't move. And we can see how that plays out from here.
Yeah, we're considering all options and using Open Gov to track all that.
And I would also say, Councilman Thomas, that the proof is in the pudding. Betsy, you opened up by saying what you guys did last year about the rate increases, it was not easy, but it's made a huge impact. And time has a way of allowing people to forget really what took place in this room. But we had a group come for us and say we needed to increase about 40%. But the proof in the pudding was going back to Betsy and her team and saying, sharpen your pencil and help us through this. Because the impact of 40% on our city would have been tremendously hard. You guys did it. You guys did it with less than. And now we're coming back to the table today, being able to celebrate what took place last year. So hats off to you guys. Thank you very, very much for working hard to where it didn't all fall back on the shoulders of the citizens of the city and beyond, where our water and sewer goes to. But to answer your question, I think we're on the right route. I think we're on the right route is what we're doing now. So thank you again, along with you guys. And Kelly, and your numbers.
Well, I just want to clarify something. When, when you talk about 40%, it sounds really large and really scary. When, when you talk about 40%, it sounds really large and really scary.
It was.
And we would never take for granted any penny from our citizens. Yet what we know is even if we had gone, which we didn't, we only did 25%. Even if we had gone that, we are, would have still been the second lowest water and sewer provider in the entire region. We are literally charging half what the customers of the Joint Municipal Water Sewer Commission customers pay. Half! Half. So we have to be really careful not to talk about 40% and things that scare people when we're not also telling the rest of the picture, which is literally, this team does so much with so little, and yet we are the sixth largest utility provider in the entire state. We have one of the most professional teams with our city. So valuing our team, and I've been thrilled to hear council say that we, you know, there's definitely a focus on giving our team a cost of living adjustment at the very minimum this year. But, but let's not, I, I want council to be empowered with the language that helps our citizens to know what is the reality and to not talk in 40% sort of things that scare the daylights out of people. Not that we would ever take for granted one penny, but we've heard if we don't do this, this happens. This isn't a hypothetical. It's not a nice to have. It's a, there are laws and rules we have to follow. You said that, that there are some regulations we have to meet with our equipment. We don't get a choice. There are things that ensure that we provide clean drinking water for our citizens. That costs money, and all of those costs everywhere just went up. We don't love that, but we're the recipients of it, and we wisely will figure out what to do about it. And we make sure that what goes back into that river is so fun that you can take your baby girl down there and go swimming, and you can take your gorgeous puppy down there and go swimming because it's clean and it's treated. And we, we, we treat, and many people don't know this, we treat to a higher level what goes back into that river than anybody else in this entire region. Our permits are higher and better than almost anybody else in this entire region. That is something for us to be proud of. But I, I don't want you feeling like, ooh, 40%, that was terrible. It literally is half what the darkness of water sewer contributes. Way lower than Lexington, way lower than the city of Columbia. So we have a lot to be proud of, thanks to you all. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll call the question. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim James?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sock?
Yes.